Yeah. Fieldhouse, we are all bundled up and we know that there's at least one person recording here, the new observer of any of them. Recording, I really have to say this if there's no one else in the room. Um, let us know. And so we're here to discuss the select board goal setting, vision and goals system. Discussion and then to discuss our priorities for the year. But do you want to just get that consented at the other way before we get started and distracted? Sorry. All of you players, I thought it's nice. Okay, so on we go to our discussion, our video statement and our goals.
Sure, um, just in terms of what I was thinking for format, it's similar to last year's. It works well, so I figured you did get some feedback on some red lines and the actual couple of statements, not on that vision. But if we can walk through those and then will we pivot to the initiatives, these gonna help us. Similar last year, there's for each goal, we put it on an index card. And you all will have your discussion and then the goal is to place it in which category you would like it. So again, we have zero eighteen months, eighteen or thirty six months, thirty six plus months. And then there's some items that may be more appropriate as a budget priority, items that are operationalized. Ones that are really truly completed, not just operationalized, but like dumb dumb. Once you would want to refer and then others just for feature consideration. So the goal is to put them all in their place and then we'll see where we are with time. And I think maybe it might be worth seeing coming here and zero to eighteen at the end. And if we want to revisit that bucket, when we get to the end, if there's twenty items versus sixty items, you know, we're coming for the trick all done. And then that may be not just a nice to do, we may need to do that. I just want to be clear.
Yes, great.
Is also your sense like how much the staff handle, I mean, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of the things I was thinking about for after today is last year, the town manager had to ask you all to rank your top priorities, maybe it's the top three. I'd like to do that again, so afterwards I'll send out a survey. But also I'd be interested in having for zero to eighteen months, if you all put them all in like tier one, two, three, like rank your jobs at five, but then rank all of them. That will help me as I kind of regroup with the staff and figure out, you know, there's some items that a very specific staff person has to support that item versus others, maybe we have some movement. So when I'm thinking about the work plan, having tier one, two, three might be helpful for that. So in the hope is or my intent is that with that survey, then before your August meeting, I can go back and say, you know, here's what the survey results are, here's how it shaped out. And if I think we don't have like a capacity issue in terms of how we sequence these, then I would tell you that. And you could find us about your office. So for vision and goal statements, there were some red line edits for goal one that came in. These all were from Health and Human Services, both the staff, and there was a discussion with the Board of Health. And my understanding was the edits were to kind of break apart physical and mental health to each give it its standalone bullet bullet item. And then the final, the last bullet there was to reflect work we already do, but recognize that we may need to do more of them in light of federal cuts to these programs and changing eligibility.
It was all a little rational to me when I could do so. Well, I guess I I recognize the value of putting some things on our goals if if we think that. Why that's gonna be something that, you know, we need to be. Okay.
The last goal is in anticipation of costs, but the federal problems that could be cut, right?
Um, so we already provide support, so we're we're a snap site where people can come to us and get assistance for how to sign up for that program, similar to Shining with Medicare. I think our assumption is that people are gonna have a lot more questions. So even if a program, if it's eliminated, there are no questions, but I think more likely it would be more complicated application process eligibility criteria.
Well, can I add, this is actually something I've delved into quite a bit this summer on Medicaid. Everyone is gonna have a much more intensive re-upping every six months. Medicaid to maintain there, so I think it's just gonna be a lot more complex, so especially if, you know, if you're, you don't have great access to technology, you know, or if the deforms may be very confusing. Especially Medicaid, and that that's for sure, that's not, because the bill passed, so we know that. Yeah, I would expect the even if programs canceled. Other supports. Um, goal four, there was a request just to add the word of four to go relative to transit.
I'm not sure if we can hold your order, but but it's a good goal.
Right, well, we're the but the our favor is toward me. No, I think they are pretty important, sure. Can assure it, I mean, we are too tempted.
You can't sure say, I mean, we'll be right.
But it's a wonderful goal.
I mean, yes, it's a great goal. So certainly something we would pursue, but. I mean, in my mind, and maybe I'm reading this differently, but the the public transit, we want it to be affordable, this is something that we would advocate for, we'd stay if they're gonna like jack up it ready to rail or the bus or whatever rates or tell us that our emergency it now costs twenty dollars or, you know, whatever. So it would be a point that we would advocate for, we will coordinate to ensure we're gonna coordinate with them. Like if they do something like that, we'll be like, hey, or don't do that. So I I don't, we obviously we can't ensure, we can't ensure that it's safe and reliable either, right? I mean, that's that's state I don't know, because running that, we are, we are simply there to advocate for.
I think that's true for all of her, also, I would say for the reliable. But I wouldn't object to the word being there, I'm just, yeah, I think it's fine, but yeah, it's fine, but.
Okay. Goal five, two edits on the second bullet, it's adding in a stashing needum as a part of safe community. This is work that's other way, you know, public health. And to be get the designation of our safe community, you have to have widespread CPR training. And advanced resuscitation protocols, which is more related to EMS than our department, and we do have that.
When in our last years, you need him, there was information about the CPR training. Maybe we stay.
And then the final bullet, this came from two departments, actually, fire and health, prioritizing emergency planning and training for town staff in the community to increase preparedness and resilience. Again, this is work we're already doing, but I think it was an omission that we hadn't reflected it.
Do we have an emergency manager?
We do, Kristen Skobel.
Oh, Kristen, okay.
He was incredibly helpful last night. Incredibly helpful every day, but. When we called fourteen thousand people last night, she, yeah, hits the button.
But she's not somebody who actually comes from having been trained in that discipline, right? And has she gone back for that now?
Um, yeah, so he's been undergoing, you know, FEMA training, yeah. Yeah, but interestingly, she was in our EOC all throughout COVID.
Okay.
Supporting the, so she had the practical experience before the designations.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so. Hearing us, great. And lastly, responsibly governed, making town building safe, functional and accessible.
Yep.
And I would view that as, I don't know, it's like multiwall aspirational and yeah, accessible to. As far as I'm going.
But as we make decisions about our town buildings, there should be something that we. But that does go on, certainly with any new buildings, but we have a lot of older buildings.
Right, or even if we're making changes to older buildings, we're waiting for the.
So we're talking like ADA stuff.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, it could also be hearing and visioning stuff as well, you know. We are feasible.
But not to be involved with people who are not live and certain.
No, not to be convinced, that pretty sure. Okay, all right.
Those were all of the edits to the goal statement. We're diving into initiatives.
Which table?
Um, the, this one, yeah, so this one has everything that's on that update document that I went through at your last board meetings, they're all reflected on the other table. So these are organized, idea number is just so we knew what the total that we're gonna get through today. FY twenty six goes with what they were originally numbered on that document that you were just holding up. Status is just for the ones from the prior year as I went through at your last board meeting, the item is what it is. And then origin, I tried my best to, I tagged it back to where the idea originally came from. We just keep a blank list about the year, so. If you want to know the origin, I will try to remember, but some of that was in the backup in your pocket as well. Okay. Are you aiming? Go one, uh, community celebration on the con.
So I think I originally suggested this. Remember when, but and at the time, it was just was feeling something fun. This. Given, you know, the events of the past year, I guess I think it's more important to continually do community events, so even though this is not a need to have, I think this is really nice to have that, that the community have, I wish you could socialize together. Something fun, just for the sake of doing something fun or any purpose or cause, just just to leave it there.
I'm inspired by the change.
I was inspired by the Cambridge Dance Party, this did not turn into the Cambridge Dance Party, but it's fine, because we're a neo. But I do think it's fun, it's good to have people come out, socialize and make community, that's how it started, right?
I would always like to keep it.
Say, anecdotally, my two young adult daughters both came to me with different events they had been to in other places and they're like, Mom, Nita should do this, so Cambridge Dance Party was Eva and Lizzie was Devon Days.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, so just in them, that's when I closed the studios, yeah. I got videos sent to me and. Plus, we never really did a celebration on our town comment, like to mark the renovation and take advantage of all the new. And then these are top common poppers, I know that we found it difficult to equip this on the town con. Still love to keep stuff good, but I again prepare her logistical challenges.
What what is the obstacle? Because I would like it on the comment too.
Um, Park and Rex planning for this year, the volume of activities they were planning, they preferred Greensfield. Logistically, the police department does as well, because it's safer just the streets around around it. But we can revisit if it's a part of, part of it, it's just tough having people bouncing between greens and the common if we're not gonna close the streets down.
So why is it a decision that we're not gonna close the street stop?
But I mean, we can revisit that.
Well, I think, I think too, that we didn't necessarily intend far in advance to to do that now. Change, but disruption. Yeah, so maybe if we we set a different project, we could move to the town and deal with those.
We're not gonna solve it here.
No, I couldn't put it here. We need to keep this on and then we're gonna figure out what's more done.
Okay, I'm hearing zero to eighteen. Basic area. All right, item two. Outreach to various identity groups, I guess I would just recommend on your goal sets, this had completed, I would recommend just going on operationalized unless anyone feels differently. Yeah. Item three, action plan for all gender bathrooms in town buildings. This was actually my request last year, we weren't able to make much progress, to be honest. So I think it's something we definitely already operationalize for new buildings. The work is just, could we convert any that aren't going through major renovations? So.
I would still like to see us do that on some basis, I mean, I just.
I saw the note about if we made all of our bathrooms all gender, that it would take up so much space. I don't think we need to do that, I just think we need to have provisions for all gender bathrooms somewhere in the building.
Yeah. So if we can take and convert and just make it all gender, I mean.
It's a good clarification, because the the intent of the goal was to set up.
All gender bathroom not available. Yeah, so I think that would be valuable.
Yeah, and I do think this relates to the goal that we just talked about, about having town to be accessible to all.
Yeah.
Being accessible to all, I mean, I think for some, this could be a big issue.
Yes.
At least one in buildings, yeah, should be all gender.
So zero to eight.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, for establishing clear guidelines for public art and kind of updating those processes for approval. We did advance this kind of internally in terms of calling all of the conflicting arts policies we have, giving some thought to other include them. If there's still interest, I would recommend zero to eight.
And isn't that something that we can ask and cut to maybe develop a proposal for for us?
Are we able to do that or not?
For.
If they could help to give us a recommendation for what these guidelines and process might look like.
What we found was a lot of this was departments, like how people engage with public works, they often end up installing benches, art maintenance, but it's also the town manager's office and how we process the select boards policy relative to how we work with and needs to be in the SEF, yeah, so it's a few things, it's the governments of those committees, but it's also procedurally. You know, a lot actually is under your jurisdiction.
Is there, has there been problems with this in the past, is that why?
It's very cumbersome, there's a lot of checkpoints currently, if somebody wants to do public art and we're not always, the policies aren't clear. If it's public art, it may like the murals, we've kind of figured out a system ad hoc for how to do that, but it hasn't really been memorialized anywhere other than like staff notes, I would say.
And I think those have been highly successful.
They've been great, so I think if it's a smoother, clearer, more transparent, it's asking. Because right now pretty sad we have a decentralized government.
Well, I would also say, there's the work now to do benches. I think you can hit a threshold where, you know, how many benches do we, we are not close to that, I'll be clear. But but at any rate, again, it takes thought about what are these things that are getting put in the landscape, but have you decided whether it's necessary? Okay, zero to eighteen.
Item five, intentional efforts to diversify candidate pool for boarding committees and to measure progress. I would recommend operationalized.
I was surprised when somebody wrote that diverse immediately went to race with diversity, because I know when diversity was written here, it did not refer to race. There were many things.
Yeah, so the survey of members includes how long you've been in town, right? That is veteran status, age, a whole number.
And came out of a, somebody walking into a meeting with a committee that was a very homogeneous group, so it was just trying to spark all difference.
Item six, our best, our business operationalizes desire, the audit that we've got state grant for, and this is eternally different facing. This town going here, giving difference. Uh, the consultant has met. Item seven, boarding committee orientation, we ran the first one last year. We're intending to run it again if you're wanna make this operationalize.
Yeah. That was the civics academy, the talk, remember doing civics?
That comes later, yeah.
A new insight. Oh, that's what I thought Chris was.
Boarding committee orientations for existing boarding committee members, and this was what we ran last year, civics academy is open it up to any community member. Yeah, to learn about town. Item eight, Juneteenth observance, in my mind, this is operationalized.
Yeah.
Item nine, valor act and senior core updates, and we'll be coming back to you August or September with those program guidelines and then at that point inspiration. Um, I would say operationalized is my recommendation for the next two. Number ten, kind of advancing new Ari's recommendations, they're kind of baked throughout the goal. And item eleven is gathering and utilizing the data from placer AI, departments are getting into.
Exactly.
No, go ahead.
With placer AI, so.
It's super. No, I I agree, I'm agreeing with you.
And and I mean, you like, I I I'm sorry.
It's a numb.
No, but but even though, like in the past, like there have been cases where placer AI is used to track people going to abortion clinics, like really creepy, terrible things. I, I think there, we don't need to use it, and I think we don't need to use it as a substitute for talking to people. You know, in town, getting people's things like I, I really would prefer not to use it.
Well, I I don't think that we've been using it as a substitute, additional data sources out there, I know, even though some people use it with ill intent, as long as we are clear on how we use it. So I think we agreed to do this for one time, at least a one-time contract, and then we could see whether it provided additional data that was valuable or not. So I think we haven't had that data discussion about what's come out of it. And I I look forward to understanding that, I share all the concerns, but I think it has the potential to be valuable. If it's appropriately used.
Yeah, well, I mean, consider the results, yeah, particularly when we look at like the, you too, like what we need to know how large all population, but but we need to have an assessment about whether or not so far it's been worth it, not only worth it for the philosophical, but also the cost, yeah, so and we don't have that.
Um, we have a cost.
Well, I mean, the satisfaction that we.
So it's, I I'd suggest then, if we, if I plan to add to one of your fall agendas, presentation of how we've utilized it, and then we can decide because the the contract expires, I think, at the end of the calendar year, so we have that.
My understanding is, yeah, Jay, he brought it up like, is it one year contract?
Yes.
And so I don't hear trial.
Yeah. Got it.
And my understanding was also for, you know, I think the RTS is all about that, or was like, oh, you can use that.
Yeah.
Um, in within vision, you know, the consultant uses it. And they're the ones that sort of, even with the tape, they will be, you know, it's almost if you get it on. Okay, I I appreciate that, I think I, there's a certain part, it's but just, you know, it's
Just so that it's clear though, that the town is that, come and track up, they're already tracking everybody.
Yeah.
All we're doing is buying their data, yeah, so the tracking's already out, they're not private companies.
Yeah.
And individuals who are buying this data today, who are located. Yes.
And when we talk about, have you got a discussion, the data? It's always be able to turn the data to, because all of us, the residents of town, us want to, want, I think we want to prioritize residents, these, the data that tells us.
I think it actually does, I think it does, yeah, but we can sell back to your, I mean, they're kind of like if you watch. It's like Trader Joe's, like what percentage of people there. But that'll, I mean, but one of the issues that came up in the vision is people who were driving through when they commute, whatever, or just doing local errands, and that's, that's.
That's fully informed, so as you said, yeah, exactly. Yeah, but yeah, I think if it exists and we just choose not to make use of it, it's like we're choosing for ourselves, but this is, if there's a question, there are cameras everywhere.
Well, yes, yes.
And so we'll keep it on zero to eighteen and then we. The most ten, eleven, or one hundred. Um, ten is operationalized, eleven.
Of course. This is why I need to go back.
Um, item twelve, zoning for MBTA communities act.
That's done.
I almost needed write out cards for the completed one, but I'm like, I think we need them. Great. Does that feel good? All right. Item thirteen, Stephen Palmer.
Yep, that was, yeah.
Optional. Uh, item fourteen, evaluate the Affordable Housing Trust.
On going.
I mean, I think that's a priority, that's a priority.
It's still, we started with, we didn't believe it last last time.
We were gonna discuss something about, talking about, you know, it's like these diplomatic talks where you talk about the talk.
That's, so, yeah.
The trust met in May, you all discussed the regulations.
I think it's a priority, because if we set this thing, then it can start to move up. Without immediate involvement, and I, you know, that's, that's our goal. Have some melted work.
No, I think specifically like we need to determine the structure.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's on it and the goals, what what are they tasked with?
Yeah, there are, there are some difficult to get to.
I think there's some difficult decisions we would have there. Them taking initiative versus account. Into the town and well, again, we want to, but we won't figure it out. It's, we have to, you can't do it, you're, you're not.
Item fourteen, validate the offensive shot areas.
Well, yeah.
I think we did our options, yeah, three options, when the client on the files.
Is there a way to sort of, maybe it's not a priority, but it's a keeping our eyes open for opportunity type of thing? I mean, I don't, I don't want to add two priorities, because we need to take away from priorities, but if we say completed, to me, that would indicate that we have no interest in further discussion.
Or or can we leave it with person rep? This is, I think, continue, yeah.
To just think about opportunities.
I would just say, Park and Gray generally has never wanted to explore this topic. And they have no interest. Right, and I, so I I guess happy just one question or comment. To me, there's a big difference. To me, there's a big difference between fenced in and not fenced in. Um, and the police department's position won't change regardless of location if there's no fence.
Yeah.
So, um, if, I, I guess maybe a clarification, if the request is that we generally keep our eyes open. For a fenced-in area, um, I mean, we can, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I say this, I'm not suggesting that this takes up any time.
Yeah.
It's, it's more that if somebody came up with an idea or something changed or answered that, this would be that it's. I guess my only issue is saying it's completed makes it sound like we will not consider this.
Why don't we just refer to town manager? Because I will just keep it on.
But if a situation arises. I'm sorry, um, so one of the reasons that we didn't go with this. Original. Was that people weren't interested in smaller fenced areas.
Dog owners.
Yeah. Yeah, so if, if they reconsidered that, or apparently. Even if it didn't bend the size of those. Is there another reason why you said? I don't really like. Yeah, we don't. Could be used for this. Yeah, and, yeah, something might change, that's all. Just, just, I don't, I just didn't like it, I like calling it firstly, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the important thing was keeping the privacy. Which had other issues.
Right. Okay.
Are, are we no longer maintaining the system?
We.
I was there the other day, it looks great, there are needs.
Yeah, and when it was built, there was no added maintenance money added to DPW, so they maintain it as they can. I think at the time it was established, the hope was there would be some kind of volunteer contributions that's fallen away, I, I believe. Um, so, is it the best maintained duck park ground? Probably not, uh, but they do, they do it when they can.
Okay, they look clean and serviceable on us there.
Yeah. All right, item sixteen, large house review.
We know, because we, we encourage and we are participating.
Right.
Not that the.
This is operationalized.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a lot of our time.
Yeah.
And we have to go through time. Item seventeen, renaming Hama Gorge to Nukwaitin's Grants.
That's for future consideration. That's not really.
Okay. Um, number eighteen, I'm just gonna generally say that this is Pollard. There's a number of, um, goals that I think will get consolidated, so.
They're also a very team.
Yeah, zero eighteen.
And I, I just suggest, look, it's not a defined funding. Really have a speed, right?
Yeah.
I think at this point, it's really about education and.
Yeah, I can, um.
Yeah.
Rework the coverage.
Further down the. There's multiple versions of this.
Yeah.
Here, maybe we could consolidate to make one that's related.
Okay.
Sixty-three.
Okay.
All right, when we get there.
Yeah. Nineteen, evaluate RTS service delivery.
Still working on.
Yeah. So our next step is to bring technical tech in to present to you the survey results and for still.
I. I guess I'm just a percolator, I'm just a, a horrible thing to be. I wouldn't show them too quick.
This was driven originally by potential need to make some other investments.
Before we make the investments, will be. Uh, approach ten million dollars. No, but what?
Okay, so, so there is a driver in actually getting clarity.
Drive, if we didn't want to best that. If it was gonna be, the draft model is gonna be abandoned.
But I don't need to disagree with Josh, I, I agree with you, but, but there is a driver in actually giving us a decision, so I do. I don't think we can defer it.
The, the decision may be to not make at least.
Correct.
Yeah. Item twenty, on seal. This is underway.
Underway.
I look forward to this being finished. Completely.
All right. All right, item twenty-one, um, expand active passive recreational facilities, action support, pick a ball. Um, I would recommend either budget or operationalize.
We funded.
Design. Um, so. Budget or operationalize, we, we will still have to find construction.
Well, I don't know that they will be ready, we'll okay.
We'll have a better picture.
All right, so budget. Yeah. Item twenty-two, improve trailhead access, um, Maytime meeting funded updated signage and maintenance money for the rail trail. So, are we operationalized?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, quiet zone.
So I would love to say it's still zero to eighteen, but we're still working, right? We don't have enough to know, since we're dependent on other people. And I mean, today is just like on dark. No, it's not fair to say that they've gone dark, but, but we need some cooperation from them. And cooperation is a very slow process. That's taking a lot of staff time.
Yeah, that's fair to characterize them. Okay, it's a debate. Um, item twenty-four, evaluate these million charities.
Yeah, I would love to do this, I mean. But I mean, I appreciate, I don't know where Newton is with it. I don't know, we can have a tip, we should have a D D B. If I, let's get this on the tip.
This is, I think this is not doing anything for the next year, that's my year.
Tip that goes up to twenty years, uh, of.
I'm just gonna say the future, so it's not.
I think that makes sense, yeah, that should. And so again, something can change and make it.
Item twenty-five, evaluate the snow, I can move those people inside docks, um, the last update. The downtown pilot.
Um, I would put that on future consideration too, I don't figure out, I don't think we want to lose it, but we are certainly in a point in time where. Two things are happening, one, it's much harder to get those snow removals out that we need. And then we're in those dynamic climate change, maybe they'll become, um, issues.
And the other issue, issue needs discussion of the sidewalks, yeah, why?
That's a different issue too.
It's a mixed bag because well, now it's more placed to pile the snow rather than just do it right on the curb via the. Parking meters, so like, there can be still paths till they can't be moved, but it's this idea, maybe the town's gonna be on the hook to do more. Sidewalk clearing in the downtown.
Yeah, this seem to be very important to the businesses in downtown. I guess I'd, I'd love to reevaluate this once we have some answers. The envision.
Yeah.
Yeah, changes that are coming. It feels like this belongs on the criteria list as a vision is. Yes, yeah, I mean, it, it becomes a plus or a minus of different options, right? If you do this, you can have your better snow rule, you do this, you can.
So you want to refer into ambition? No, we can't do that, honestly, but.
Surlay that, yeah, for, for the envision project. I mean, to add to their analysis, right? But is it not more for the consultants to have it, rather than, I mean, the committee is gonna talk about it, but.
It's the reason they can't, it can't be accomplished.
But wasn't Karen saying that if the sidewalks are wider, it enables a different kind of equipment, which is easier for staff? So I, I think there's a, there's an interplay there.
Yeah, I think it's a both and, so.
Yeah, so I, I don't know that it's, you know, if it's easier to do, it might be that.
Okay, so criteria for envisioning the center and it's also. Um, twenty-six, uh, parking payment by app. Did you, this is delayed by. So just thirty-eight. Um, twenty-seven downtown redesign, which is ambitious.
Yeah, um.
This isn't, um, zero eighteen isn't one that we completed, that's just one we're working on, right?
This determination of a plan.
Right. Item twenty-eight, Dave completed. Um, updated at N S policies. Back in Quinn.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, item twenty-nine, community master plan. Many communities have community-wide master plans, which are, uh, land use. Um, so planning studies, it's transportation planning, it's climate, it's economic development, it's housing, it is a true. Master plan, um, so it would entail a very large community engagement process, uh, funding for a consultant. Um, and the creation of a, they tend to be, I think, like, ten years out, lookout.
Yeah, I just feel like that, it's just not. Either sounds like a year or never.
Well, also, I mean, like, let's get your legs under you. First, and you have, like, also we do attend master plans, like, I'd say eighteen to thirty-six.
Actually don't know of that, I'm a huge fan of them. And I, I think they take a huge amount of resources, and it's not clear to me that they're, in many cases, all that well-used. I, I don't know, I, as opposed to like the underlying components, which I think can be very helpful.
We have a lot of it. I mean, there are still things that we need to do. Do you know, but I think it's more a question of like. Communication between various studies that we've done.
Yeah, I also think that we're in a fast-changing world, so you could spend enormous amount of resources and put this thing together. And then think about like the floods, like, we weren't expecting that, and that, that causes to change direction, and so I just wonder, back to your point, Mary, I'm like. Usefulness of this, we're not in the kind of world where things are just static and predictable for ten years. So you, I think we could spend a lot of resources on something. It's, it's not a year one for Katie thing.
Yeah, great. Sorry, there are a few blockades called out, if someone make a recommendation.
Put it in thirty-six months, we can read look at it.
Item thirty, um, tax facilities upgrades, I will say, um, we. Did secure the twelve additional parking spaces from the T, so that portion of it's complete. Thank you very much. Uh, it's a lease agreement, yeah. And, um, license agreement.
Yes, it's in budgets.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so this is, design has been funded, um, so this would be construction money, so if there's interest, I would recommend budget.
Yeah.
Can I just, quick message on the budget thing, but I, I agree, that's where, that's where, but, um, this year in particular with Pollard. I think fiscal strength is really important, so I. I'm not, I can't, I'm like, I'm not committing, just because it's in the budget category, that's where, that's processed. But if, I'm really worried that if we don't show fiscal strength this year, that it could jeopardize the Pollard votes. Like, people really need to see that, that we.
So a clarification, budget isn't that we're made to put it in the budget, we're just committing to review that priority during the budget process.
For recognizing that it needs funding.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fair, no, I think you're absolutely.
Yeah. Great. Um, item thirty-one, evaluating ways to increase minority women of business participation in town. Part of procurement guide, so, zero eighteen or operational.
It, it will end up being operationalized, but, uh, the manual stuff will be completed, because we'll be coming to the board. In terms of, um, some of the, uh, policy decisions for the board to vote upon. And that'll be late fall, early winter.
Is that like procurement?
Yeah, and just, uh, what are our procurement policies? I mean, it's gonna be a regurgitation of laws, but also, um, and. Wh- wh- what level of priority does the town have? For, for instance, doing business with women and minority-owned businesses. Is that something that when there's a tie, we'll go to the minority, or is it, uh, that if it's a tie with a local business versus non-local business? It's the local business of, uh, uh, policy decisions like that is what gets incorporated. But most of the manual is a regurgitation of laws.
Thirty-two, recruitment and retention efforts, as recommending operationalize, we always read this as constant. Thirty-three, um, I've seen this by. I have recommended this last year. Restrict temporary signage, um, but also the social questions that come up that. Um, I still think we need to do it by. Eighteen to thirty-six or thirty-six. Thirty-four is reviewing updates on board policies, um, to start context, you know, some of this is, I've been smiles. Things need your review, like alcohol updates, um, but throughout this document, there's some concrete policies that you all have identified. Um, so we can either keep a catch-all.
I like.
Like this. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would rather be zero to eighteen than operationalized, because it's. We have to bring new things. Operationalize is like staff's got it.
Yeah.
Zero to eighteen.
Yeah, no, the different reporters.
We need to bring. Thirty five, enhanced data collection, value of progress, new goals.
We think this is our first one?
I guess I would ask for clarity on expectations of what this means. I mean, I think we're regularly incorporating data in our work, but I don't know if. I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on what you wanted to get out of this.
I, I guess how I interpret is, um, the goal we just talked about, like, having assessed whether is a livable. Is, you know, we are supporting people's mental health, things like that, like, uh, making sure that we're meeting our goals.
I think it originally arose when we were talking about. The kind of data that we capture, for example, by the building department, which does not capture things like installation of heat pumps. Things like that, so we have no way to track the, you know, one of our goals is to establish education and and, um. Get people, get residents to participate and we, um, switch over. But we don't have any way to track if residents are. So, and at the operational level, like, the building works, the department's office, so recording that information, same thing with. The stormwater, large pass tree bylaws, we're talking about. Changing requirements of the plotland to include more items, um, while the stormwater. Not necessarily reporting. Tree bylaw wants to have town. Capture that information so that we can use it for a later assessment, we don't, we don't currently have a way. To capture that information and analyze it later. So I think that there are, there are some changes that need to be made, but it seems very project-specific. I'm not sure that. This goal is necessarily right place for this.
Yeah, I think, um, just thinking through that with the trees, I think that's part of that conversation of what is the bylaw require of. Community versus staff and do we have the capacity to do that, the tracking of HVAC or kind of energy efficiency. If that is something the board wants us to do, um, I think that is a project in and of itself for our sustainability and our building department to figure all of that out. Um, and it's not something that we would kind of settle upon anyways unless you ask us to make that up.
Because right. You're talking about, it's more like community survey kind of thing. Which is operationalized, maybe we want to add to questions to focus on the things that you mentioned, but I think. The origin of this particular goal was was more about how do we track? People are making, residents are making changes that we want to know about.
Oh, it seems like. It looks very different depending on the data you're trying to collect.
Yeah, exactly, it's one thing, yes, it's, it's just. Yeah, actually, she's as cool as. And then, and then in specific cases, that's.
I think it's important to say is what sort of data are the departments collecting, that's really what you wanna know. And from that data that we collect, will it be useful and to go to the board evaluating its goals? I think it would be very difficult that if, for instance, building code items, if. If there's something that we wanna know that's not in the building permit, I don't think we can ask it because it's a public record. And we get requests for people's building permits weekly, and so people will be very. Uh, leery to provide any information that's not actually legally required to be provided on the building permit. So going back to the beginning, I think we need to know what is collected and let you know that, and then from that, we can make determinations.
Right, but we don't necessarily wanna go through everything, so. We don't know how to do it in specific to.
I'm, I'm saying what other specific data points are captured, not, not the actual data, so you'll have an, the board will have an understanding what's. What the departments are already collecting for information.
I would still say page by page rather than. You know, we don't. It it's in specific. I think it's a philosophical question, right? It's a discipline question. That says, when a department sits down and looks at goals and what goals fall within their department? That one of their questions should be, how are we going to ascertain progress? And that we would like them to be thinking about, do they have the data? Or the information to collect it, and what would that mean to ascertain? I mean, I, that's what I mean, it's a discipline, so how do you look at a goal and think about? How are we gonna know when we got there or what indicators?
Yeah, that makes sense, and I agree to that with the caveat that, um. If they do that and decide their metrics and their data, but then we're not collecting something that you all then decide that you think you need. Um, we would need that feedback loop, um, so I I'm just thinking about the climate energy efficiency stuff. We certainly can talk to sustainability manager and say, how are you tracking goals on the climate action plan? That doesn't mean that we're gonna produce the data that you just specified, so, um, I think then maybe it's a further conversation of. Is what the the staff recommended sufficient for you all to feel like you have the data you need? To check the progress. Yeah, so, okay, so this will come off.
Doesn't need to be a goal.
But it's a discipline, yeah. Okay, thirty six, explore options for evaluating town council. That is what we did last year when this goal got added. So it's this regionalized.
So other towns do. Uh, like, I'm comparing it to the town manager, every employee in town council valuation. I mean, yes, town council is not an employee, but is a. You know, consultant, I guess, hired services, but like, do other towns evaluate town council similarly?
I'm not aware of an evaluation, uh, in terms of annual performance. That way, I I think it's more discussions when town councils are procured, what they're looking for, but. It's a little bit different than a annual.
And I guess I would observe, having lived with council situations now for more than twenty years in town, right? It gets to be clear, when a board is dissatisfied with what they're getting. Council and that triggers an eviction, right? Um, I think my sense at this point, as long as the board in consultation with the town manager feels like we're getting the service that we need. That you continue on that path because there's actually value in that history, right? And then, we'll see, we'll get to a point where we'll know that it's not working, I think. But I haven't seen other towns doing that, an evaluation, certainly not on an annual basis. It's been more driven by circumstances where there's a mismatch. And it also reflects my experience on school committee and here, where that mismatch occurred, so.
So maybe that's operationalized, it's just a. Thirty seven, DPW-based renovation construction. I originally was gonna recommend this to you as a budget item, but, um, I'm rethinking that as potentially zero eighteen, depending on what. Happens with the power feasibility, if that impacts the current DPW master plan, this becomes a much bigger project than just a.
On the timeline, so the, the, uh, Jack Hogswell expansion is already. Next phase would be for several years, right?
I mean, it would be part of the capital process, the capital process to figure out the phasing, and there's, you know, we can't de- link that from Pollard.
Right.
Uh, but I just. Or, you know, evaluating the options, it's not like actually.
But this is on hold until we get Pollard decisions.
Well, I would suggest there be T because it's gonna come off whole. As soon as we have plans for those sites.
When, when will we know where this school is gonna be built?
Looks like this fall. Yeah, we will start seeing what is feasible in weeks.
And what the relative costs are to determine.
Yeah, so I just, I don't wanna lose sight of it because of these. Thirty eight, library capital facility improvements. Um, the young adults base construction is funded, they have three more phases after that, so if there's interest, I would suggest. Again, with the caveat that.
Yeah, it's a.
I have to evaluate priorities.
Yeah, Paul is gonna be jealous.
Thirty nine, implement successor agreements for expiring contracts, um, town manager and fire chief was completed. The ones up ahead are police, fire, and BCTIA, which is our custodial and trade staff. Um, so operationalized for.
But as Katie says that, right, there's a lot of negotiation that's gonna be going on this year. Three critical big units, so just keep that in mind, because that's work that we see really in executive session at. Short junctures, but it's a lot. So sorry, I've heard second.
Um, four G. Uh, protect the town's true.
So we're slowly serving.
All right, item forty one, uh, town's year emission birth policy is completed. Item forty two, explore, uh, the PACE program. Um, the sustainability manager will bring you a presentation on this this calendar year, and then you could decide if it's something you find. Forty three, stormwater by law. Over zero to six.
Um, forty four, oh, wait, I have to tell you something on that, I completely diversion, I told Kevin. I put it in my calendar, my calendar converted it to supermarket by law.
It's not gonna gotten worse.
I think it's definitely.
Yes.
I'd rather make my own mistake and have someone else.
Uh, forty four, um, this was a recommendation from the sustainability manager to assess their climate strategy. This, yes, this would be rather work, largely with the climate action.
Wait, is this, is this basically what she would do anyway? Because this is her job.
Uh, it is, um, it is, I mean, you could refer it.
I don't think it needs to be on our goal, yes, for certain, yeah.
Oh, that's not, yeah, we've got a position, staff position and a committee, yeah.
Well, except that she, that was just, it's important, new strategy, but like, what do we ask for?
I mean, ultimately, we have to prove it, but they, they, that's the easy part.
Okay, so we're referring and we'll keep you updated on the amazing work that, yes, yes, great. Um, forty five, this is completed, we have regulations, uh, to prohibit non-EVs from parking in EV charging spots. And, uh, we have had to.
And number forty six also completed.
Forty six also completed, the energy average.
Was it three-year contract?
Um, forty seven, launch a civics academy. No, so this is, now we're entering into what last year was in eighteen to thirty six, so it's things we would not have started, because we're twelve years out.
Twelve years. I would support keeping this in eighteen to thirty six, I think it's, yeah, I don't think it's our highest priority of other things.
Okay. Okay, I would love to do it in the future to call it transparent, but if it's later, okay, maybe we can promote, promote the. I mean, I think right now. Okay.
So where's this going?
Uh, for future. Item forty eight, piloting, um, comparing on street parking to active curb uses, so this would be changing signage of the.
You don't really wanna disconnect.
Well, this is.
It could also occur in the height as well, but, um, but.
But whatever they have stopped, like, I mean, we could establish some. Guidelines and then apply it in all. Commercial districts.
I think we we could think about if we wanted. Business district, I I wonder if it's more, I think forty nine, that you guys can make a decision on, and I think forty will center that.
Maybe, yeah. This project could be a big, it take.
This is a project, this is a whole project.
I think this. Forty nine. Whatever it includes is for me. You know, we, people are, our parking system says that we have enough parking, but people are very.
Territorial.
Well, but people, people don't feel this, don't feel that way, right? That's not their experience, so, um, I feel like a rework. And and I think the consultants have, um, recommendations for, so it's not like we're necessarily starting scratch. Um, we should look at. At least piloting some of those changes and seeing if.
Well, yeah, there were a number of things they were, you want to do it just to zero to eighteen.
I do.
Yeah, there were a number of things they recommended that didn't sound that hard, that would. Okay, we're in the.
Like, some of it is related to what you're already doing with, uh, the hat.
Right, right, so, so like.
Because we're already sort of dealing with.
And what, um, I'll suggest one way to think about it, because there's a number of parking rules further down on this list. Um, changing the parking rules and permit program is the current spots we have, who gets to use them and when. Later, you have other goals, which are, do you want to create public-private partnerships to expand more private lots to have public access? That is its own project, these are, these are separate work. It's all parking, but in terms of workload. It's all parking, but in terms of workload, these are not small projects, um, so I guess as we go, we can put zero to eighteen, but just clarity as we go, like. Which is the priority, yes, yes, and you could tier them in the survey, but I just wanna say like, all parking things aren't one project.
But they're related. Perhaps should be done in possibly to each other.
Potentially, yeah.
It's just, would it be easier? Cuz I agree, but all of these are related. Would it be easier to team up geographically, like, consider all parking in this area? And then, you know, some other years later, we could this area.
Yeah, but either way, all of this stuff is happening.
Well, certainly if one were to, for example, pursue this public-private thing to create more parking, that would definitely affect your decision to do differential pricing and how you get it and all that, right? Cuz you have a different. I know that would take longer, and I know we might wanna do that, but, but that they are very. I know staff, they are different projects, but in terms of the decision-making, they're so closely related, like we can't really make good decisions about how to allocate your current parking spots if you, if you don't actually know how many you're gonna ultimately have.
Yeah, but that makes it so unwieldy for a committee to be like.
I'm not taking necessarily one committee. I'm just saying it's maybe just hides, like, closing time.
Needs change.
Yes, it's change.
Wh- whatever system we implement, oh, oh, you know, it's like, related to the parking, these like, that can change very easily. We can change, but, but if it's physical infrastructure, are we going into too much detail?
Okay, so.
It's a discussion about when we're having a discussion. It's not the discussion.
This is an important discussion. We all agree. Or old forty eight into forty nine, make forty nine zero to eighteen. And when we get to the one about public-private partnerships, maybe we can chat about like making that having a conversation not.
To have a keep it separate, but really.
Narrow that so. Make it manageable to actually.
Party partnership, maybe.
Okay. Item fifty, evaluate funding options for rail trail extensions connecting high rock to medium junction.
I don't know, this seems so expensive and.
Although it's still lower hanging fruit than the.
Clarify, are we still talking about path through the woods or are we talking street path?
Who's it is? The path through the woods.
It's both, but it's not. And we, no, but fully street based. It's, it just, this, I mean, I, I, I love this idea, but it's expensive and I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it's a big priority, but the priority is moving people safely. Right, by bike, which can be done without many of that, but it was theoretically, maybe, I mean, our.
So that would be a project that need to figure out what would.
The option they consultant shows years ago, so expensive, is the do a trail and then it's. Yeah, and then some, you know, everybody turns around and then he turned on just that, and then there's another two bridges with a park that I do for.
I think we, if we, if we move forward on this base to say that the priority of moving the people safely.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. Living situation.
Well. Yeah, I was letting you move through, um, the designers, you can't do, do data loss, we need change, bringing up that. Yeah, and it would probably require some purchasing land.
Do you want them to read that or do it?
So further, how more for future consideration?
Eighteen inputs, and what we need, there's some actually that really love this, this is a priority for a lot of people. And if we just take it off, and yet it's like, this is like my third goal immediately, push this off.
Well, we did evaluate it. That was not like we never, you know, we had a consultant, they brought us the thing, and it was really expensive, so. It's not like we never looked at it.
But I, I agree, eighteen to thirty six.
Yeah. Resist to.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. All right, eighteen to thirty six.
Yeah.
Yes. Fifty one, consider further plastic, reducing plastic.
Yeah, that's done.
Like refer, because you know, maybe somebody will come up with like, we need another idea, but I don't know that it needs to be on our. I, I'd really rather see, uh, the goal be to advocate for the town to advocate to the state to change the state law, which is like a little. Because I think every time this, this subject comes up, we all say, well, I wish the state to it could lead on this and being something uniform that we can all follow. And we have the authorized came to write a letter on our account to.
Fifty two, evaluate testnet street.
This seems like.
This has lived over the years between the planning board and the C E A, I would say, in terms of, um, generating new ideas and trying to prioritize.
We could refer this. For ideas.
We, we also, can we take reason?
Yeah, but.
Are, are we, is that the plan or?
I think that's. We're looking for ideas and proposals and ways, I mean, I know. Happens that quarter through the past. Other initiatives helps move that along. Well, in my mind, squarely, again, M B G A communities access about housing and, you know, if we're interested in modern business.
Markets already ahead of everyone. Their property is in your hands, is at least death and parcels in the last eighteen months. Assumptions, but this would be irresponsible, same, because it's assumption, not.
But the, the C E A does have uh, members who are involved in some of those businesses, and so. I, I'm happy for us to refer it there, at least in the short term, and then everything comes back to this, anyway, yeah, so.
And probably more nimble.
Yeah. Okay.
Refer. Fifty three, advance, uh, review and advance recommendations from the general bylaw review committee.
That is in our bylaws, so we will be feeling bad. Fifty, when will that, when you're ready to report? It's for the May twenty twenty sixth meeting, so I mean, we're especially now that the signed by law is not happening, um, we're going through it pretty quickly, we're actually taking the summer off, and so we'll have a couple more parts to look at. Really, and again, I don't wanna violate our talking about talking rule, but, um, it's really a lot of housekeeping.
So I'm just wondering when we would expect to have a report, that's why.
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, late home for.
Maybe winter.
Okay.
So, as inside. Um, generally speaking, uh, I'd love it if we as a group could commit to more substantive committee reports generally at every meeting, all the things that could actually happen, especially critical. But even if it's just housekeeping, just, just to sort of give political air to all our meeting happening, and then maybe we can make specific checking. But once you have a meeting period, wherever you're at, it doesn't need to be like you've accomplished your goal, but just like, where are you? Cuz like, a lot of these things just.
Uh, fifty four, um, I add this request implemented at the figure time, we actually, we have, we will do that regardless, but. Yes, yes. Fifty five, uh, maintain equitable ambulance rates, uh, this request, um, the fire department, and I don't wanna speak for Dave, but I think it's time for us to update those.
We will certainly look up what our rates are compared to others, and like, you know, spoiler alert, we're below most other towns.
Goal for us, certainly it needs to come out. My sense is this is happening and it's been identified as inappropriate.
I think it's safe to say it's an operationalized.
Like this ambulance rate, he might need a regular cycle for review as opposed to an irregular cycle for review, but.
It's good, it's just one of those. It's, it's doing what it's needs to do, and therefore it gets pushed aside.
And fifty six. Uh, Amy spoke to this at your last meeting, we are required to be A D A compliant on our website by April twenty seven, so again, this is gonna happen to regardless, um, but I would make it to be on zero to eighteen, but.
And what is the one for us versus the cost?
Everybody can create, every document needs to do it a certain way.
Universal design.
So, so the design will already be in place, but it's, it's getting the staff up to speed to make sure that the content on the site is compliant, but beyond that, any attachments of which there are there is that are posted every year, so it's the point moving forward, you don't have to go back in time, but as of, uh, the end of April twenty twenty seven, everything moving forward needs, and you make sure that all of the P D Fs, everything on the website, all of the attachments. So. So not to complicate this, but as we talked about the other night, is this the right time to put in something indexing? Scenario where we can, cuz in the future, moving forward, we have accessible diagrams, I just still can't tell. Like witnesses. I mean, certainly, it's, it's upused to be. For, but like. If we're renovating the way we do things, do we not just put that?
In fairness, we're trying to do that, and when I speak with the different companies, because Google does it so well, no particular company is spending its resources to do the searches, cuz Google already does it, cuz Google does it around the world.
Well, then they should just incorporate Google right into their search engine. Can be done.
Which can be done, yeah. Right.
You know, there's always this question of available versus.
And I guess I, um, we can talk more about breaking that into some chunks, because when we have boarding committee software, I think that will have an ability to index some things automatically and be, yeah, that'll help. I think we will be able to, so I think we'd.
And I think it connects. And just linking to other documents, blocking all the people to things is starting.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, for sure, okay.
Um, fifty seven, implementing our enterprise life finance software.
Down here. How's that happen, thirty?
I would say the implementation will be done. Acquisition of the system.
We'll be working on it.
Yes, we will be.
Um, fifty eight, this is a duplicate, uh, recruitment retention effort, so I would suggest keep it as operational, but just to note, we, we got funding to do a. That eight, so that'll be.
Can you unsell it with the other one, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Fifty nine, um. I think they're gonna recommend this as operational things, um, so the town has a twenty twenty, has their mitigation plan, this is a foundational document for emergency. Fairness, um, the recommendation from Dina is that we have to be set every five years. So I, I think it's likely. So, operational. I believe you do. Yeah. Every five years is the.
So this is gold to.
For you, yeah, yeah, for all of the, the permits involved in the plan. Yeah. So operational. Um, idea sixty, um, conducting active search drills, facilities, studying out their actions and informing as plans, I would say this is already in place, so if you're. Maybe every building. It's tough, though, yes, it's.
Yeah.
It's also hard, and just imagine a restaurant having it, which is very vulnerable, and having to enter, um, your guest step at two o'clock on Wednesday. So, and they may not take so kind to it.
The drill itself.
We have closed facilities for certain things, I mean, like if we needed to take it off long enough.
Yeah.
It's just when you think about places where an active threat could actively happen, that is.
Item sixty one, um. Came from the health department, um, the town has a completed accessibility self-audit, this is looking at every building and every parcel that we own and, um, reviewing it aligned with A D A. Um, so the next round of work is to go through those recommendations, prioritize and see what we can bake into few future plans. I guess my suggestion is potentially refer it, there's not a huge role for the board unless something becomes a budget item. Uh, the health department.
Well, and what about our, um, meeting?
I would say with the commission of disabilities, I would suspect that the health department would consult with them.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But project managing it. Making, oh, it's actually the library boardroom next year, which you say, um, it's a lovely space.
Maybe we should have our goals.
Um, item sixty.
I know I was.
Does anyone wanna break? It's ten thirty, we're halfway through the. Yeah, so let's take a five minute.
We refer that.
Refer it, yeah, great. Yes, yes.
They are visiting anyway to.
Item sixty-three. We talked about this.
We talked about them.
Right. Item sixty-four, create an economic development.
I thought the. Would be another one that.
Yeah, it's related.
So, yeah, like other. But I I would, I would say. Uh Amy has already. What they have offered. This is insulting. Assistance. Obviously we bring that back. Well, we don't know, but that's.
CA's advisory does.
It is marketing tool or is it?
No, I think it's a roadmap, or well, I mean, I think. The point would be to get a roadmap for economic development, but. No doubt it would include publicity.
Are there downloads of thing about signage? Bernito crossing, which I laugh about, that was my intro ten years ago. You know, eventually we'll get that. Okay, referring to C E N sixty-five, addition on public parking options to public private agreements and partnerships. So this was um what I was referencing before, if this is something that you wanna do, maybe we can identify. All partnership. Or.
Doing, you know, and I. Going back to that consultant that showed us places where we could do that, like some of this can be. Easier, lower effort, and then some of it can be more effort if we wanna go there, both for the businesses, but also when we talk about access to the T. You know, it's easy to park in Hershey, but.
You know, I don't know, like there couldn't help. Look at access.
So we've.
Well, of course, yeah, and and. Yes, you weigh all the considerations, but I think we should. Yeah, but I think it should be very.
Cause like, well, this is the public project, but the the Lincoln Street lot. Um Highsmith Police Station, that's a public parking, but that's not near businesses in the center, so I I I've never used.
Yeah, but it's, well, right, yes. Permit holders, which largely employees of those businesses.
Take a requirement regulations that we play a lot of.
Um sixty-six. Considering bonds and loans to the Needham Housing Authority, I guess my question is, is this part of the affordable housing trust goal? Or is this separate and apart from that?
Separate.
But no. It could be the others, and if this says, you know. In fact, there could be other entities. Yeah, I I think it falls into the affordable house because, cause they could look back to this balancing of. Accountability with, you know. Things, and I think it's the same discussion.
Yeah, but part of that discussion, but. I don't know whether we want. To give that as both before. I mean, when we discussed it last time, it sounded there's a lot of disagreement just among.
Right, just may not want to, but I think we need to discuss, that's like the parameters of. How far are we gonna have?
Yeah, where did you? Was the worth of ten dollars at risk, right, that go back to that. Okay, so we'll include this as part of the project, may have about trust. Yeah, which is not to say that it may end with the trust, it may move, but you need to understand it better and they could.
In I had, okay.
You have to read the highlights.
Yeah, with uh wherever they get. Okay, um sixty-seven, provide trainings for the select board, the two that have been um identified. Whether it was the escalation.
The escalation in what context?
Uh challenging conversations with.
So like somebody in public comment, some public things. Like I guess other towns have experienced some unfortunate incidents.
Yeah, many situations, people come to us with their grievances, that's just appropriate, but. Personally have the. Like training to handle other people are very angry. And I have, that office hour has been in situations that. I would prefer not to be there alone, and I think having a little bit of. Would have been handy, uh also the emergency management part, I feel like I don't know much about it all and. Products left, but I feel like I should.
Yeah, and I'd say there is um. A pre created training for emergency management for elected officials to really clarify what is your role in emergency versus, you know, what is. Staff for first responders.
Right, that would be great, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, some of like, you know, maybe buying.
Yeah. You know, as far as the T escalation goes, if other people aren't interested, is I don't know that it has to be like a. Hold on, in person thing, it could be, it's just identifying, of course, training opportunities, those who are interested, but.
Yep, even lying, whatever. Uh so. It doesn't have to be a. It's just, it has to be, it doesn't have to be a public media, which is.
Okay. So it's zero eighteen. Provide resource for training. Reduce inflow and infiltration. Um. D W's funded at Maytown meeting to do this, so I I don't remember. How this made it on its list, on the list, but I would suggest operationalize.
And operational and budget.
Yes, budget. Yeah, that'll be a part of it. So I think we're tackling it from a few.
Yeah.
Any, so we're. Um ops.
Please, yeah.
Uh sixty-nine, updating items friendly forty B guidelines.
Talk about indexing until I saw it on this list, I didn't know this existed.
That you were not the only one. Yeah.
And that was this, like adopted by the select board at some point, cause I I saw there's a committee that wrote it.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Twelve years.
I think so, in the Chinese media.
No, yeah. So updating in terms of what?
So the process, at least for the the last two forty B applications, didn't follow this, it was different, so if we want to. If we want to do something differently, we should change it or follow what we already have.
We didn't follow our guiding.
Well, I didn't, we know it existed, but.
So. Are you? Are you saying didn't follow, our decisions didn't follow the guidelines, or we didn't, you didn't know that they were good?
I'm telling both. After I found out that it existed, I read it, and it was, the process was different than what we. Had to follow, so basically, part of the guideline says, you know, before. Things come to the select board, it should be reviewed by, like the planning board, design review board, but other boards. And we kind of flipped it, we said select board goes first, and then it goes to everyone else.
Uh right, well, so this is something that we can. Put into review, I mean, we talked about square book policies generally.
Um if if you all want this to be one that we and you review. Can I ask, do people wanna? Take until the next meeting and read this and see if it's something that you like, that is, cause I think it's two different things. Do you want us to go back to follow the existing policy, or do you want to change the policy?
Right.
And I don't feel like we have done our researching into that.
So if we could do that.
Okay, so everyone read it for the next meeting, okay. I think what we want, I think we appreciate friendly forty Vs, so being able to be clear about how that can happen is.
Yeah. I know that Amy has like literally two spots left.
So he added, she also just. That's not the point. All right, seventy, I don't have to.
Oh, no, we're making that decision to do that.
Lot of work, yeah.
And the benefit to us is it's gonna do all five of those intersections, that's the really big thing, otherwise, well. Either way, we have to make this decision, yeah, any moment, any moment now, so it's gonna be zero. Yeah, we just.
Yeah, she's gonna reach out and set up sometime. Kathy, you're the only.
So if it takes a little bit of, yeah, the detail, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get this good. Um seventy-one. This is Pollard.
Yeah, it's.
So Walter Booker, I mean consolidate.
Like we should just. Half of those fall into.
Uh seventy-two, increase staff capacity for communications, community engagement.
Well, I think that's an important one, but I don't, I see every project on the board is. I mean, everyone's taking responsibility for it, but if there was a. Guidance from a more central location.
So, so.
Um I'm sitting here trying to decide if I violate my role. What I would say is that any things that relate to staff increasing, I almost would wanna see. Any and all staff increasing things in one place, so that you have a discussion.
Budget, we're gonna have to. Yeah, it's the other budget things.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Seventy-three, create communications and community engagement toolkit for town projects. This is asking for the guidance for staff and for. And I I would just say, uh.
I was gonna say, this is a recommendation that's really coming from staff, isn't it?
Um yes, and it does have many. Yeah, boarding committee members, we got like.
We wanna distant, yeah.
Consistent, consistent, see, I think this is.
I don't think this is, I think this is easier said than done, this is a hard task.
Yes, I appreciate that reflection.
Yeah, it's just like communication is a hard act.
Seventy-two, our um advanced overall petition law, but did you have points of legal notices exposed to kind of print newspaper applications?
Yes, but is that? Isn't this referring to you, the regular?
No, this would be, we have to go to town meeting to create a.
Oh, oh, I guess I was.
Super great if the state would change that policy, you're also.
In the general bylaw.
Yeah, you mean, I'm guessing it's coming from the town, I mean, it makes sense, because. There practically aren't any newspapers anymore, so it's really just like, can we deal with the reality that we're in, that people aren't reading newspapers, aren't the the. The one thing that came up. You're that cute, but like sometimes in order to get something in a newspaper in a timely way, you have to go to the globe and pay a lot of money. The timing doesn't work or whatever, so.
But more people get the whole amount of time, we do, so it's less.
But the timing may not.
No, I know, but it's ironic, because you're not reaching a wider audience.
No, and it it it's just because the rules no longer comport with the reality that we face, I think, you know what I mean, of a digital world, so. I think it makes sense, I hope it wouldn't be very tend to consume it.
But, yeah, I I don't know, so but I'm nearing zero eighteen.
I mean, I, you know, it's not like. It doesn't have to be zero eighteen, I think there's so much else up there. This is not like creating a crisis.
Legal notices are. But there there is like a repository online.
Yes, but I think the problem is. You're legally, the requirement is the print newspaper, that's the legal.
But that's not the only people, place where people get the information, right?
No, 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 but it's mandatory, so that's the problem, the least useful is the required one, right?
Yeah, times have changed.
So where we. Zero eighteen.
Seventy-five, revisit recommendations um from new RE focus groups. Um, Mary Ann, we talked about this a little bit yesterday, I don't know if it's referred to the town manager or.
I think we could, of course, to.
I'm not even sure what that means, yeah, so there were some other new RE focus groups that happened later that. That didn't actually get discussed then at the select board, and I just think we need to go back. And relook at some of those recommendations that came out of. Groups that have been in and markets facilitated. With various parts of our community where that could be some support.
Item seventy-six, explore building on parking garage on the Chapel Street.
So I wanna be clear, I. I don't know who who else this came from, but my recommendation has always been parking garage with housing above it. It's a combined thing for me, I I want both there, but.
So, since this is like a very expensive proposition, could we, we have so many other parking things?
I I I don't think it's, I, yeah, I don't think that this is happening anytime soon, I think we gotta do Stephen Palmer first.
Um so thirty-six. Which guarantees that it's like a lifetime appointment, so. I just. No, staying, I know I'm not violating, but I would hope that anything with a public private partnership would not have to be. That would be, um do we just hold it in for future consideration right now? Does that sound okay? Someday, I hope somebody gets that, I think it's great.
Uh seventy-seven, study the results of the voluntary initiative by landscapers to trial electric equipment and then decide about a full or partial gas leak or ban.
Right, ten, we're getting seventy-nine, oh, that noise by law is separate, this is when the. Uh lead owners were coming up. On contracts, like. Didn't know about their viability or like they want. And so I think. By law. Often, plus let them have a chance to do this for a year or two, so. I think we just wanna sort of put it for future consideration.
Okay, yeah, cause in theory. We don't need to do anything for them to trial.
No, no, I was.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, seventy-eight, develop communications protocol for the board.
I'm sorry, what's seventy-eight?
Yeah, develop the communications protocol for the select board. So this came up, when does the board as a board make a statement, when is it the chair, when actually should it just be the town manager?
Right.
Or an announcement from the town without it being a board statement. Or an announcement from the town without it being a board statement proactive versus. Just creating guidelines on the front end as opposed to deciding.
You know, it seems to me that that could be a conversation that you guys have, uh, a chairs meeting and then they just.
Seventy-nine, uh, update the town's noise file.
I, I don't, I don't know if we can do it just ourselves or if. It's short, we can do it tonight, but today.
No, we can't. All right, it sounds like we should start with the review, just like we were starting for review on forty B. Put that on, let's. This is like board review. Yes, I love.
If you can print the entire.
Um, eighty, review the slide boards committee of fleet. I guess the question is, right, is this the same as forty B, or do you already know you want to update it? Review and discuss at your August meeting if you. Eighty-one, consider goals and strategies for undergrounding wires and eliminating poles. Um, and, um, I've had four due some. Contact your cares.
There's also a study. I don't want to send this to, to you and cares, a, from, from the state, uh, in twenty fourteen. Um, the, the Department of E- Energy Resources. And basically their recommendation is, uh, it's a case by case basis, like there are certain areas where it makes sense and, you know, you. But it's very fast, so it doesn't make sense to do it everywhere. But I do, but. I don't think we know where it says that.
I don't, I don't think, uh. I don't think it makes sense to add this as a policy position. I think there's enough information now that says. A, that it's very expensive and in the scheme of things, I think we have much higher priorities. I think you do it opportunistically, so I think that's, that's part of it, some issue, I don't know. And the flooding question was an interesting one that. That cares raised with our experience of flooding and I'm like, wow, you know, ten years ago, nobody would have even thought about that one.
It, it, it's easy to miss an opportunity if we don't know what we're looking for.
I guess my, my sense from when the town's done it is if it related to development. So the opportunity is then, is there a new subdivision going in, is there a re, a large redevelopment or a large, um. Street redesign. Lay out the street, so I think that is how we have been thinking about it, so I think maybe the question is, is that. Do we just keep on keeping on with that thinking or is it something?
Well, I think kids like this, if they all have rebuilds. Had we required a builder to bury lines. Eventually with the help, whole neighborhood stuff under there. But like, there's things to be pointed to, it hurts, like the utilities in the road is still tight and it's so static. So it is case by case and I don't, I can't wish twenty years ago we had something, but. I think we'd be in a different place. But I don't know, it would happen with the builders doing it, but even then I don't know if it's possible.
But, and just the coordination of so many different utilities is night.
Even the center of town. There was a deliberate decision at some point to get rid of the poles, like everything is undergrounded in the center of town. So are there areas in town where, where that would be, other than the center of the, where it would be beneficial?
Yeah, in the heights, for a second, do you go and do that in the heights? And maybe that's a question that should be asked of one hundred west, is that? Yeah, I mean, the thing is like, one of the things that has always struck me is that. Lines, because they need to form trees, but it sounds like there's some stuff going on under the road that you're gonna do the same thing to the trees. So it's kind of a catchphrase too, and it would need to be assessed each. Unless that policy is assessed. Every time you, you know, do a project, you assess, certainly if there's any subdivision that goes in. That's the opportunity.
Yeah, so. I'd like to talk with Deep W to see if it makes sense, you know, if engineering, when they're doing their reviews. Could, and if they think some, a place is a good candidate. That they can identify.
In this from center of that. So a builder might say, I'll take a look at.
Well, you do see builders do it because they have to come in to apologize to the board often. They're doing it.
Okay. Maybe this is operation. Or for future consideration.
Yeah, cause it sounds like it's not operational, but if we.
Or refer, refer to town manager. Okay, um. Eighty-two, identify enforcement options for GOL violations.
So we're really not seeing a lot of repeats yet, the issue is we see them the first time, and I think to the extent that we've. Continue to find new examples and close them down, that's a good thing. There's actually one. I mean, and then there are a couple of, you know. Outside of the operations process.
As long as we're confident that we're catching all the violations.
Well, they have to come, they have to come to us because of the ever source thing.
Yeah, we end up al- always getting them because ever source is the one that finds a GOL with us, so. And, and they follow. Ever source does file the name.
So I would say keep this for future consideration, if it comes up, that we're now having more.
I feel like it's not a problem, in the sense that we're catching the existing violations, that we don't need more administrative work.
For, no, we're not seeing a repeat. Well, there was, and certainly we'll see repeats, but we haven't.
Electric is the only one that's still required under message law. Gas and water, or whatever, being cut through the.
Electric and cable. Gas is already going through.
So that's a permanent thing, so it always works. But, cause like we, they could put up all the structure. I kinda wonder if maybe we ask, you know, like. Josh, Josh, please put this on as some organization thing.
Do you want to not approve cable and electric or do you want to approve gas?
I don't know, I don't wanna do that, I, I say that's just something.
Okay, so you would take the, you would remove the grant of location process from the slide board?
Yeah, we only do that, doesn't stay required, required by law chapter or something, something.
Wondered why we spent time on those myself.
Yeah, I mean, people don't get it, it's a system to do gas and system.
Occasion, few, yeah, where it has mattered to a neighbor and where they've done things. So actually want somebody to think about it? Who we review gas, let's just see. So, so why would we just review? And if there's a, if there's an issue that comes up.
So the grant of location process is established in actual law and it. Requires the slide board to play a role in that process for electric and cable. And the statute doesn't require it. So handle that industry.
Well, if it's, if it's meant to be at the state, we don't get to changes.
But, do we, as one of the calls.
And it could be something before we write the letter to Josh.
Eighty-three, uh, review and address select board segments.
Yes, it comes up in time. It was last time. I'm not saying do it like this.
What would be the?
It was last done when the town offered to give a lease to Crown and Shield. And the lease with Crown and Shield is expiring next year, so. Put your timing together.
A fifty-year review.
Yeah, it, it, but honestly, it's not a, a. I mean, we, we need paid giant dollars and people still expect so many things. And it's fine, but yeah, but I think one is it's. Um, it's so paltry, I think it was sometimes, I, I tell people, they go, are you kidding me? That's it, like other times, you know, manage professionally and.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, Boston has a mayor and the, you know, in Boston's city, we get it, but the point is, it's, it's. If back in the seventies, when this was done. It made sense, but it doesn't make sense now, but the logic doesn't. I mean, just to me, but do you want the number higher or lower? I'd like a higher, I think it should reflect based in the model. They never reflect.
Just make us look terrible. Yeah, it's hard for me to imagine that. There could be a relationship between the stipends running.
But I think so, it's our, some are, we've children.
There, there is a school of thought that says that, um. The, the lack of stipend that recognizes the level of work is a barrier for some people in choosing. To run, maybe for a role like this, so there is an argument there.
I guess the other argument is we don't want people running for the month.
I don't think we're gonna be. Doing any of that, but. It seems to me that the amount is so disconnected with the time spent that even adding to it is not gonna make a difference for somebody choosing. Like, it's hard for me to imagine. Unless, unless it's significant enough to allow. One of us to like work part-time and also have this as a job, I don't see the point. So, so it's not gonna be that much, so. Was I gonna take it off? Gonna take it off? I'm gonna take it off.
All right, I'd like you to go on, but I don't want that.
So if somebody from town meeting decides otherwise and comes up with those down, but.
I had, item eighty-four, review number and structure of select board committees and make recommendations for potential consolidation reduction.
Yeah, I think this is a super important, I think we're all talking about time to money clearly. Like, there's just too much, too much, we are spending three and four nights out and meetings. Weekly, I mean, we got a complaint about. Choosing this date for our meeting and it's like impossible to find a date, we can all meet, we all know the cities and. So, uh, I would definitely be favor of reviewing consolidating or. Um, or making it so that if we could appoint a dozen me instead of having to go ourselves, I mean. Not across the board, but to some of these places. So do you wanna be careful about the creative desert me? I think that could be a proper choice upfront, but, but I think as a way of extending. The reach of, we got some off then because those are all tied to staff members as well, and there's. There are limits, I just think, so the consolidation or thing, no, it's almost more important. I think having a dozen me as we put together each committee, maybe we're considering each time, is this. Is this a select board member or could it be that's me? Right, but I worry about saying, oh, we've made it to that's me, but it's still reliant on the same staff. That's still a problem. That's, that's true as well, cause when I say we, I'm actually talking about the five of us. Working rooms or whatever that comes from it, it is too much over, staff is working. Crazy long days too, and that's, that's not. Right, so here's the question, I don't think you can adopt this as a goal. I think the question is, when we get finished with our, all our goals, we're gonna need to say, is this too much and what can we give up?
Or defer, like, we're not.
Well, are we gonna say at the end of this process, we're gonna come back and look and say, is this too much, is that the commitment we're gonna make? Well, we should do that anyway.
So then I guess maybe the remaining question is, is there, are there any committees that are existing that's not directly tied to one of your goals? And do you wanna look at that? I don't know that there are.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, I wonder if sometimes committees, and I have, we all have to think about specific examples, if they persist. Beyond their necessary life. You know, I don't know if that's the case, that's where I would see maybe the proliferation, cause we're taking on new. And we're not necessarily getting rid of old, and maybe we just is kind of like not boarding, you know what I mean? Bring your things into your house, you gotta throw things away, so maybe that's. You know, so. I don't know.
It does, it does feel like this is gonna get borne out in terms of when we have the finals area eighteen. Are we, do any of them require creating new committees? Um, so I, I think it'll get at, like what you're raising. Because you also then go through the process of assigning yourselves to those and something's gonna have to give.
Well, some committees also maybe don't need, need to make as office they do, or, you know, there's families. It is important, right? And, and both the board and staff. For, for more than the last year, and I think it cannot go for at the same. So, I'm just interested.
I'm gonna suggest refer to me. Eighty-five, if my guidelines were stacked or responded after.
I think this will be last. How much can we gain is necessary? If you'll be specific, I think, you know, the differences, um, making sure that residents, okay, it's having them or. You get access to the question, so it might not be a question about like a project that's on people's minds. You know, something that we're actively promoting or focusing on, but if someone has just a question about, uh. You know, something that we're actively promoting or focusing on, but if someone has just a question about, uh. What's permanent, or if it's. Uh, you know, related to building, making sure that that person gets pointed to the right direction and gets their access to their answer in a timely way.
And I'd say just for context, um, the current expectation of staff is that everyone's confirming receipt of an email inquiry within forty-eight hours. We don't have the, a secondary guidance of the substantive response, just because. The variety of questions we get is so wildly different that to set a timeline on a substantive response. We never have felt like we could put a timeframe on that. Other than just general reasonableness and responsiveness, which is absolutely in the eyes.
But I do think it's reasonable for people to. Their questions can be answered.
Yeah, I mean, if the expectation is that we respond to all questions. Oh, I think that is already the expectation.
I, I've, I've heard from residents who will say that they receive that acknowledgement, but then they do need to expect a follow-up.
I mean, it's hard to categorize this about, like, knowing what the. Question is and how involved it is. A lot of times residents will write in comments, but not necessarily a question. They think they've asked a question, but really to us it's not a statement, but this thing, that's. And so. I know, it seems a little.
So I'm, I'm actually like specific question, so, so personally, there's a question with the water and sewer bill.
Yeah, but then they just get referred to the right department, correct? I mean, that, those are easy to answer, I guess, is my point, is the ones that aren't easy to answer, but that are problems.
But, but even if the easy to answer ones I've heard from people who, who haven't. Gotten, uh, uh, gotten pointed in the right direction.
So I guess what would be helpful is if, if and when any of you hear of those instances, if you just tell me the exact instance, yes, then I can follow up. Dig into it. So it's less of a guideline, but more just a management.
So we're starting referring.
Okay. Eighty-six, review voting locations. Um, and I think this is, uh, specifically in Newman School. I, I would recommend if you're interested in it, I would recommend zero to eighteen, because.
About may impact other locations, like if we change new name, it might shift other places.
Yeah, so the clerk, I think, would make a recommendation.
It's the only school left, right?
It is, it is, yeah. And we've gone to none, we, we have the golf club, um, just like public-ish, it's. But that has worked, it's my understanding it has worked, so. Um, eighty-seven, consider adoption of, uh, this master and law to create a board of public works.
I put this on before I got, uh, my internal detail. So, let me give some background, this is about congestion and traffic. So I, I, I think traffic congestion is. Has been a big issue, like it, it basically kills the, the muzzy zoning the first time around. It comes up in every project and now like most prominently in, in vision meter. Um, and, you know, like. The, the. We have mobility groups that, that are really good at signage and those little. Education and promotion and advocacy for ways to, to change. Things outside of like the physical infrastructure, but when you get into the physical infrastructure, I think that's where. In vision in particular, it kind of broke down, um, and I. In my mind, this is a solution where like we can have an elective body that, that oversees like. Physical streetscape redesigns so that people know that there's like an elected body that's overseeing that. Apparently it's us technically that's doing that, but we don't have the bandwidth to do that and, or the expertise, I think. So, uh, just in the long term, I'm really thinking that we need to tackle. Congestion and, and physical, physical infrastructure to address congestion, otherwise I think. It's going to hamper our ability to do a lot of projects, including like, you know, the, the project on. Uh, DPW, the cars building and, you know, the actual state park, people already are talking about how are you gonna fit the cars? Where, where are people gonna go? And I, I, I really think if we can. Have a handle on. One group that's in charge of like physical infrastructure related. Yeah.
So, so I actually, uh. This may be a longer conversation, I mean, we need to have it as long. I, I wouldn't support this, so Board of Public Works does way more than that. Including hiring and firing the director of DPW, which is not something that I wanna change. Right, I want that to continue to be under the jurisdiction of the town manager, so that's the key responsibility that they have. All right, and then they also oversee those budgets. Now we have. But that creates complication again on our town management. We just did a redo of transportation committees and they are just finishing their first year. I know I've had conversations since they finished with. Both Charis and with the heads of those committees about things that didn't work out the way. I think the group that talked about it had expected that they might roll out. So I think there's some work that's going on there. I guess my view is we need to give that a chance to try and settle, because we have had many years where we knew it wasn't working. Certainly through the whole muzzy process. Um, and give them a chance to get some of the principles in place that we are hoping will happen. With respect to complete streets and sidewalk policy. Some of the building blocks that are needed.
I guess I, I would say, I, I, I think. The concern is very real and, and, um. I think the problem that you identified is very. I would say that the issue I have with this is it creates another independent power base and. Whereas, and even in your comments, I think this came through, all of these things tie into other decisions, so it's. If you say it's a barrier to development, so it's tying into a given project. Or it's tying into how we want to do economic development, or it's tying into the poller. And I, I'm worried that creating this independent thing, that's just all they're doing is optimizing traffic, sometimes we have to balance. That against some other equities and I kind of worry about how that might balkanize in terms of decision-making, but I hear what you're saying. I think it's very real, but I guess that the balkanization concerns.
Well, also potentially if we do have committees that. At least tracking towards that this very simple, we just talked about adding to the. Establishing another thing.
Existing committees. I guess, I guess they do talk with Charis and, and, and like, you know, make recommendations about layout and streetscape.
And the goal, one of the goals was actually to make that process more public. Not the, the public and decision-making there, but the public had insight. Right, and, and that didn't happen this year, for example. Uh, so that we could make that, those, you know, six months of projects more visible to the towns that, you know, is coming in.
So like when a, when a project was. Who do they go to for traffic?
They go to a traffic, they hire a traffic consultant to use that. Because they're gonna need to do a study that counterbalances whatever the developers bring. I mean, that's not gonna change.
I would add, um. Highway engineering review, everything that goes to planning board and CEA. Um, and on large projects, also the plan department has also hired a peer review. Of the traffic study of the.
Um, so, so that's yet another type of, like a higher downside help. And, and it sounds like they wouldn't go to the, to the traffic mobility committees, right?
They wouldn't, I mean, those committees are certainly aware and they certainly provide input. Right, because they do bring expertise, but I don't think the people in the town would let the town get away without doing a peer review. Of any large project traffic study.
Because, well, I mean, because it's all in the, I'm thirty and we still have quite a few to do, plus we have to rank all those, so. Uh, everybody, I haven't read this, can, can we start there? So, I mean, we can still quickly and obviously. Within the eighteen months, we're, you know, we should have this discussion, but.
I don't wanna put it on your goals, if you read it and there's clear consensus, you don't want it to be a goal, so I'm wondering. Cause sure, that's too very. So when you finalize your goals, I don't see it. A key decision.
So we need to bring this language, so people will review it.
So we don't be putting our packet.
Again.
Yeah, because I was just gonna say, we, like, all the things that.
Yeah, there's four hours to review now.
There was one.
There's four. Yeah. Okay. Eighty-eight. Eighty-eight and eighty-nine were, um. I did from the clerk that I believe that is intending to do, so he is to our property, they're being announced street listing to verify.
So it seems operationalized, is this something they are doing? It's not one of our goals, it doesn't seem.
In fact, we could refer, right?
Yeah.
And I guess, let me just clarify, for everything we've referred. Uh, aside the ones that are coming to be a town manager, but ones that are going to committees. It's a very comfortable that I'm referring the fact to encourage the, that. Group to continue without. There aren't any that you're. Yeah. Okay. Um, eighty-nine, review street listing and border registration to that down capture rental term. The clerk is. And those are important a lot of. Ninety, um, this came from health, provide training and technical assistance to service establishments to. Just pay enough to pay on food safety.
Feel free to continue to do that, refer.
To ninety-one, we've seen access to feed and healthy foods. Expand availability of free rental housing inspections, ninety-two. I'm personally do that, yeah.
Any series?
Is there a bunch of question?
Spin availability. I think that's also.
Okay, ninety-three, reactivate transporting task force strategies. Ninety-four, ninety-five came through the historic commission, identify and implement strategy to preserve both historic and smaller houses.
So again, to me, that's referred, that, that's their job as the patient. They have a proposal, they wanna bring us, they look forward to hearing, yeah, but, great.
Ninety-five, update the task preservation plan. I think that's where. Yeah, not. Ninety-six, um. Recommend an increase in that local citizens tax deferral in Act clause forty-one A, this is actually not in the feedbacks. This is, um. Is that up to us or is there a state? No, we can. To increase it.
To increase it, correct, um, and. It already exists, this is just increasing the income eligibility. And again, if, if we have something specific that can be presented to the board for consideration, we would do that. But it already exists, that it's, it's the property tax deferral program.
Yeah, can we ask the committee that makes decisions on this to make a recommendation based on what they're seeing? That we refer it to them to make a recommendation back to the board if there needs to be something?
It, well, if you qualify.
It's different from this.
Yes, and no, this would be the Board of Assessors, and quite frankly, if you meet the test, the board can't deny it.
So just for clarity, so this is deferring payment of property taxes upon the sale of a property.
This is to, yeah, this is to defer the paying your property taxes to which interest accrues while it's deferred. And the taxes do not need to be paid until either the property is sold or the individual is deceased. It's not a reverse mortgage, it's, yeah.
It, it's like that, you don't.
You, you, you're deferring the tax payments, there is a cap, but no one gets. Uh, people who do qualify, who, who, they're not gonna be around long enough to hit the cap.
So this.
I don't believe this came from the Board of Assessors, I don't know where this came.
This came from a select word member and, um, a committee member. Asking that the income limit to be able to participate in this program be increased. So I think that's the question is, do, do we wanna increase that?
We can certainly look at it, but it's not a discretion of the community, this is state law. Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that's what they're making reference to is the state laws. Yep, um, petitions. That's what I have to see is, uh, is there room that within the law that doing this? Yeah, no, there are more people that are participating than four. Probably at that day to time, most people wait to the last moment to submit, because a lot of applications came in. In the, in the last few days of March. And the other thing is, uh, people are informed of, a lot of people don't want to do it. What they would prefer is you to eliminate the taxes, which is not practical.
We all like that.
But we can certainly give just that fact. It's a four percent interest rate. It is four percent.
Ninety-seven, um, establish a new committee to explore community programming.
A new committee. And I know that there are a lot of community members who are interested in this. Get some of them together, but not sure.
Yeah, I mean, if, if group, community groups are, if residents want to put on an event, we can permit it and they can run it.
Well, so I think this was the thing, right, this was the third Thursday's and that thing. That discussion that Avery ended up writing about, but everybody has that stuff, it's book. And yeah, I don't think we wanna solve here, but I agree, it would be great if we could support the work.
Yeah, I do this. We also talked about integrating this idea into some existing. It is, like, I'm just saying, we don't need to establish a new committee. There are some committees that go, we're inappropriate for potentially, there are community groups that do this kind of thing, you know, we just support them, but it doesn't necessarily need to be.
Something or a chamber, maybe.
I think it's. If they could work in.
Okay, I don't think this. So just a general, that's what it that, the more events the better and. Propose their ideas that. Ninety-eight, create greater awareness in town about accessory dwelling units.
Discussions.
Sure, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, like his major communication.
I don't think this needs to be one of our goals, right?
Uh ninety-nine, advance zoning reforms in addition to M S D committees to promote development.
Prefer. Not to blame.
Yeah, so express our time specific.
Yeah.
Only I get. In the downtown, it was the mixed use policy. You have a twelve, many years ago, and I think that's just, maybe that needs to be refreshed.
I think the planning board, so doing it some other things, right?
All right, so I know.
So.
There, there are separately elected boards, this is like that to BPW thing, but there are separately elected board, they do need to do their job, so.
Um I did one hundred, advocate to Massa to change the signage twenty-eight for me. So same in my. I have such a strong memory already.
I mean, we could write. What does it say, did these signs say now? And the street. So that's the one, the Kendrick Street. Although, I will say that uh they never did paint. On, you know, at that intersection. They never did paint the the I ninety logo on the lanes.
Oh, they couldn't. They tried to.
No, that was what their their um compromised position was, instead of changing the lane structures, remember we wanted a middle lane to the street or turn? They said, oh no, but we'll we'll make make it clear, because we'll paint on the road that you're in. Yeah, that is, they never did. Yeah. The answer is, I would love to see the check sign changed to Newham Crossing, but I don't think it's more than writing a letter.
Yeah. Sorry, oh, do you, do you want a letter? Or we put in future consideration?
I'm fine. Sure. I'm not sure that.
Or ninety-five. If, if we wanted to pick a fight with Maston, I would actually go with your complaint.
Well, I want to take a fight, thanks. I just said, I'm not sure that, I mean, what is the point there, to make the Needham Crossing name a destination? I mean, the street you're let out on is Kendrick Street. I I'm not sure what the.
It is a, it's an economic development tool for branding, like if the sign.
You know what, let's refer it to the CEA. And see what they decide. You know, it's, it is an economic development. You you also could just let it.
You know, you know, we had, we have people on the CEA who are part of. Yeah, they're amazing, and you let us, but they feel like it's important. Because actually there are other. Yeah, related items that I have wanted to raise there. Great, fine.
In Zema can follow up on that paint marking at the Kendrick Street intersection?
I'll ask about it, that's something that they said that they did. I'll ask them, I I've, I have lost track of the the many iterations. Yeah, okay. Uh one oh one, last one. Add what what approved town message boards, digital or print around town and actively update.
We have some. You know, the problem with this idea for me, it's just that, that they just don't get updated. I mean, it's just like dashboards anywhere at any company, at any, whatever, they just fall off. The radar unless they're like a one and done, like you update the website and it automatically updates and. That seems.
I would say our electronic message board that we have out at RTSP said is actually the the working well. Because it's one person who puts about it on a computer and they. Uh so that is sustainable, this is um not.
Yeah, I don't know what, the other thing is people don't really look at them.
Well, the slides. At the fire station, I can.
No, I think those are because of the the where they are and the prominence, but if you have. The minute you have more of them and they're all over the place, I think you actually diminish the impact. Having the two where they are, I think, is more impactful than. Having lots more. I don't know if you did see, there was a suggestion that the. One at the RTS might say on Friday afternoons, host at noon, on Friday afternoons.
Great suggestion. So, and then it can revert again, if I say that.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um. I don't think this needs to be whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, or at least it's it's part of the communications.
We have sixteen minutes to spare. Conversation was rock up to zero eighteen, and see if there's anything you want to call off or further discussion.
I'm not sure bonds and loans to N H I has to be zero to eighteen months, that's a heavy. Right. Okay, that's a question of whether, I mean, first we have the value. So the right, keep that there, right, I just, yeah, I think that. Project, I don't know, right? Well. I have a question, can that all be, can you consolidate an AHT one? Which we're sending to. Whatever we do with AHT, right? I think we're getting done in zero to eighteen, it's a piece of work that we want that group to do, though.
Yeah.
But it might, that that piece may not have. I agree with that, AHT. Is that, that's like the most.
Yeah, advanced version of. I'll tell you, forty B guidelines is one of those policies that we agreed to look at and decide if you need to, okay. That's, that updating noise by law, I mean.
Alright, so we have, can we group some things that we aren't sure whether their goals are not yet, right, we're gonna discuss, yeah, this, or this. Where's the Board of Public Works? Right? I don't know where Board of Public Works plan are, because I'm saying they're all setting. Just over here. Oh, they're just. Oh, it's not one of the, that's, that's something I'm doing, but I was gonna say noise, right? She's not looking for the number, no, no, with the, with the. Ah, the Board of Public. There it is. Okay, so those four were inspired to decide whether they go by holes or not.
Word.
And then important. Affordable house. So. This, and this go together. Right? This will be ongoing for.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we think about the bonds and loans. It's another group kind of. You know, it may be, it will be recurring conversation.
Yeah, we'll still have to figure the bonds out that. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm also in construction, we have that, yeah, I'll have and everything, this is another thing that the town's taking on, or that. I I feel like this is gonna be very. It's more of a longer attention. You know, are are taller things that we're kind of.
So, yeah. Unless there's a. But these three acts also. What can you put? Right?
We're ready for the guy. Updated, on the procedure, public card. And that just feels super urgent to me, there's just some of these other things. That's like a nice to do. I think it makes our life easier if we have it, for sure, so.
I have the sense too, I I'm not judging this as a, as a, I'll help, but. When I send you the survey, if you tier things to your one, two, three, that will help you figure out sequencing, and. You will meet again at twelve months.
Right, yeah.
So there may be things that stay in the zero to eighteen, but if they're tier three. Well, I will update you, but yeah, you. We will do a six month update, and then we meet again here, yeah, so I wonder if that, if that's the kind of thing in terms of. We'll just um, we. You may prioritize without, within zero to eighteen months, in a way that's helpful for the work plan, without having to move things to eighteen or thirty six. If there's nothing, obviously, we have it.
You know, nothing's jumping out here.
There, yeah, that's.
And so your poll will.
Okay. So. Yeah, some of these just have questions. That's what they're going on in their line up and.
You, you graph upon time, cost.
Yeah.
Where does that brand? What, I know, but I guess it. Is it?
I wonder that question, the home rule for digital only, is that something that planning can undertake?
I think creations are articles, um but they would benefit from it, uh certainly. Uh but it may be if it's a lower tier, when we have the capacity to. To have some digging into it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so. And then means for remember. That's, I think.
That's what I can get any, we take photos of each. And maybe, maybe we want to put those forges up here. A bit of it, to put them on the wall. For the moment, can you take photograph?
Yeah, I'll go there. I'll take the photo, I'm here, they've lost their.
Yeah. That's what I had, Emmy resprying.
And Lucas moving.
This was amazingly fun, but.
I'm so sorry for being here again, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I am grateful.
They were gonna take some of them, sneeze.
Cash, my, my, next year, just. I will take it with my.
Those were they were.
Okay. And Steve.
Slipper doesn't leave right there, that's right. I'll be ready for that. Oh, yeah.
Anything else you want us to talk about?
No.
Are we good?
No, don't talk about it together. No, it is, thank you, this is incredibly helpful, yeah. It's a good.
Alright, so, so is there a motion to adjourn? All those are bigger?
Second is the most.
It's a time on earlier.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, goodbye.
Thank you.